I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call Kathleen, please.
Davidson.
Here.
Fleming.
Here.
McCambe.
Here.
Reed.
Here.
Anderson.
Here.
Thank you. First item is, as usual, is a consent agenda. All matters listed under Item 1 consent agenda having been discussed are considered to be routine, excuse me, by the City Council will be enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from consent agenda and be considered separately. On the consent agenda this week, we show finances miscellaneous, beer, liquor, wine and cigarette license, reports and bonds. We have three resolutions. One, establishing sewer user fees and solid waste fees and ambulance service fees. Number two, resolution establishing a new fee and charge schedule for septic haulers. Number three, resolution approving maintenance and operation of public sanitary sewer, storm sewer and pavement systems in the South Ridge subdivision. We're also setting the date for four public hearings on April 16th, which is the 2012 ongoing seal reclamation project, for one, vacating portions of streets and alleys of the Maple Lawn Division, for number two. Number three is an encroachment agreement in Valley and Front Street. And number four, block grant application for downtown façades. And we have one appointment on the consent agenda.
Yes, Your Honor, we have Flint Hills Golf Course Advisory Committee, Bob Francis.
Thank you. Is there anyone from the audience who wish to have any of these items removed from the consent agenda? Sitting down in council, do you have any?
None.
I'll entertain a motion then.
I have a motion to approve all listed under Item 1 consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion as second. Kathleen, please.
Davidson.
Aye.
Fleming.
Aye.
McCambe.
Aye.
Reed.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Very good. Thank you. This is a time set for a hearing for consideration of the sale of property locally known as 524 South Marshall Street, City of Burlington, Iowa, Des Moines County. Publication's been made in the Hawkeye, and those who wish to be heard at this time may do so. Do we have anything we need to say about that before we get started?
I don't believe so.
Okay, we currently have received six bids for this property. The current high bid is $9,000. It's a single-family home, and we would like to open it to anyone from the audience who has not already submitted a bid. Would you like to do so? If so, come to the microphone and state how much your bid would like to be. Otherwise, at the current time, $9,000 is the high bid. Don McCabe, 12646 Highway 61 is the high bidder.
My name is Don Harder. I live at 1018 Canterbury Drive. I would wish to place a bid of $10,000 on that property.
Thank you, Don. Are there any others who wish to bid on this property?
Yeah, I'm Don McCabe, and I live at 12646 Highway 61, and I would raise the bid to $11,000.
Current bid is $11,000 by Mr. McCabe. Do we have any others?
Twelve, twelve.
Come to the microphone, please, and state your name.
Do we need to take a number here?
Again, my name's Don Harder, 1018 Canterbury Drive. I would bid $12,000.
Current bid is $12,000.
Again, I'm Don McCabe, and I would raise the bid to 13,000.
13,000. Thank you, gentlemen. In the back, sir, did you want to? Anyone else?
Thirty twenty-five, thirteen fifty.
One million.
Mohammed Nuwisi, 3222 West Mount Pleasant Street, 13,500.
13,500 for Mr. Nuwisi.
Thank you.
Thank you. 13,500 is the current bid.
I'm Don McCabe. I'd raise it to 14,000.
14,000 by Mr. McCabe.
It's a hot property. It's a hot property, boys.
Is that the end? Mr. Harder?
Is there any living on the acreage?
Mr. Nuwisi? Is that you're good? Anyone else? Anyone else? One last time, anyone else? Looks like 14,000 for Mr. Don McCabe, 12646 Highway 61. Eric, are we okay with that? Thank you, gentlemen. Okay, we need a motion. $14,000 to Mr. Don McCabe.
Your Honor, I have a motion to close.
We have a motion as second to close the public hearing.
So I've...
Wait, we have to do this first, okay?
Davidson.
Aye.
Fleming.
Aye.
McCambe.
Aye.
Reed.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
All right, now, we can entertain this motion to sell the property.
I have a resolution approving the sale of the property locally known as 524 South Marshall Street, City of Burlington, Des Moines County, Iowa.
I have a second.
Sir.
Okay, now, we need this amended.
I'd like to amend Exhibit C of the resolution approving the sale of the property locally known as 524 South Marshall Street, City of Burlington, Des Moines County, Iowa, that the property be sold to Don McCabe in the amount of $14,000.
We have a second for that.
Second.
We have a motion as second. Kathleen, have a roll call for the vote, please.
Davidson.
Aye.
Fleming.
Aye.
McCambe.
Aye.
Reed.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
And now, the motion amended.
Davidson.
Aye.
Fleming.
Aye.
McCambe.
Aye.
Reed.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
And it's approved, Mr. McCabe. You are now the proud owner of 524 Marshall Street, as soon as the quitclaim deed comes true, okay? And Eric will take care of you. Thank you very much, folks. That's an interesting process we've come to now.
Let us know when the housewarming party will be done.
Okay, we have an ordinance before us now. Mr. Fleming has the...
I have a motion for preliminary adoption of the second reading of an ordinance, rezoning the properties locally known as 2270 and 2280 Florence Avenue to include a planned unit development, the master's PUD overlay zone, as allowed by Section 17.20.40 of Title 17 of the Burlington Municipal Code.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Fleming. Second by Mr. Reed. Do we have anything additional to say about that, Eric? Anything new?
No, there's been no changes, but if you have any further questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Okay. Dan, do you have anything?
Nothing additional.
Okay. Is there much from the audience wishing to speak on this issue?
Tim Larson, 3104 Crystal Drive. By now, you all know my stand on this proposed development, so I'm not going to repeat any of that. Instead, I've got some questions. First of all, I feel the water issue has been kind of glazed over. Has the golf club's letter been addressed? Have not heard anything about that. Last meeting, we did hear there was a water runoff guarantee to my neighbor to the north. I'm just wondering, would all the rest of our neighbors get that same guarantee from the developer, since the elevation will be changed to that land because we'll have walkout basements on flatland? Just a concern. And speaking of guarantees, when I go to sell my house, will my value be guaranteed? Just another question. One clarification I would like to know is, last meeting, Eric said something about this area is pegged R1 slash duplex. When you look at the city planning maps, it's R1. Just a little confused on that, because a while back, a developer that was developing some land on the south side of Florence Avenue had a vacant land or lot that he was trying to put a house on, and he requested a duplex be put on there, and the city told him, no, that would be spot zoning. So I'm just a little confused. Then, to the land itself, there are two houses on that land. There were two septic tanks. There is a leach field and a well. Have those been addressed at all? Because any development that goes on there, those have to be addressed. I still urge you to vote against this. After two and a half years, there are still too many unresolved issues on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. Do it. Have any answers for any of those questions, Eric?
As the one aspect on the single-family slash duplex, that's in our future land use map, that just allows the council to rezone something to duplex. The actual zoning is R1, single-family, but based on our plan and the future land use map, it does allow the rezoning to R2. The wells and any leach fields, that would be addressed through the county health department, and that would obviously take place before they develop. The rezoning, we're looking at the uses of the property, but still get building permits and follow all the standards once they get into development, it is approved, so...
Randy, is part of the agreement that you have to hook up the sanitary and all that too, right?
Yeah, yep.
So that has to be included.
Yeah.
I'd like to address the, just briefly, the spot zoning, because that keeps coming up, and maybe I don't understand it right. I always thought that spot zoning was trying to squeeze a commercial business into a residential or trying to squeeze residential into a commercial area. I thought that was, I thought that would be considered spot zoning, some kind of... Because I've heard this several times, and I've been... Is Kemp still here? Yeah, I just heard that several times, and I couldn't, I couldn't put it together where it was spot zoning.
Well, I feel anytime you rezone something...
Wait, we need, if you're going to come...
At the time.
You know, I just feel that anytime it's rezoning something, you're doing a spot zone, especially in an area that's a neighborhood already, and you're changing that, to me, that's a spot, you know? But, of course, you know, I'm not employed by the city and don't know that, so we're just kind of going on that.
Eric, here, the difference is that the PUD allows it to happen.
Yeah, there's two variables to it. I mean, there's legal spot zoning, we have neighborhood commercial areas all around town, that's legal spot zoning, and looking at compatibility of what's going in, like Shane mentioned, putting industrial on one lot surrounded by a single-family residential is one thing, but putting duplex, which is the closest compatibility factor to a single-family next to a single-family, is quite another thing that is allowed by our code and by our conference of plan.
All right.
And Eric, this runoff and where this water runs, I know I brought that up last time too, but, so will the water run, are there like storm sewers out there? I mean, will water run into storm, because it won't run down onto the golf course, I mean...
There's some natural flow that could continue, but they're going to capture flow, and it'll run through piping into the stormwater detention area that they have, and then that'll be outletted, I guess, through the existing piping system there, so...
But I know the golf club did question that. How do we answer to that? How do we answer to their concerns that that's going to ruin that area there?
I think as Steve mentioned last time, there is an easement along the west side of the golf course that runs south. That would be an ideal location in a stormwater area, a utility easement to place that. There is water running on the golf course now, and this development should not increase that, but it's not going to, I guess, eliminate any existing water. As I said, it's clay area, there's quite a bit of runoff existing, so I guess looking at clay versus pavement, there's, should be a very small factor there.
But what if it does? Then whose liability is that?
There's some engineering corrections that would need to be made.
But is that, then do we do that as a city?
If it's approved by the city, I guess that'd be something, I guess we'd have to look at, probably talk to the paperwork structure, but I guess this is reviewed by our city engineer, and if it meets our codes, then we approve it, so...
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak?
As you well know, I'm Barbara Hahn. I live at 3216 Crystal Drive, and I have concerns as a homeowner and also as a golf club member. First of all, this whole thing has been sold as a great development thing for the City of Burlington. We're talking about 10 duplexes, five duplexes, 10 homes. I know that at least 17 people from my street have contacted you or been here. At least three people, no, five people from the next street up have come. When do we, as voters, as members of the community, have a say in anything? We're talking about 22 people, and we're talking about a development that's going to bring hundreds of jobs that pay $90,000 a year. We're talking about five duplexes. Now, in the City of Burlington, I drove through some of the duplexes this weekend. I drove through Orchard Meadow, beautiful wide streets, an avenue, you know, with the median down it, a lot of green space. Went to Gary Run. I think there must be 30 feet between the two sections. Both of those have signs up and have for years for sale, asking for development. I drove out to a condominium site that's outside of town, and I think you're aware of that, south of town, and if you see how much larger the homes are, how much more green space there is. We're doing this for what reason? For great development for the City of Burlington? Well, what about the 22 families? At least 22 families that have been in here? As a golf club member, I don't think you're taking that letter terribly seriously. The easement doesn't mean that water can just run down the side of that. The planned containment area is really at the highest elevation. So how are you going to pump that water back up there? Also, we heard that, oh, no, that will drain in 24 hours. Is that a guarantee? The plans on the website show it as standing water. Now, if you look also at the website for the development for this, it shows actually another area being prepped, and all of the grass is scraped off, a lot of the trees are going. I know I've said this before, this is my 32nd year there. Grass doesn't grow well, it's rotten clay. And now, we have to ask about that leach field and the septic tanks. Are those going to be pulled up? Is it more dangerous when that water runs down? As a golf club member, again, I lived through the time that a berm had to be built by a developer because the water was so bad. So, no, it's not just a solution to just run it down because there's an easement. You don't get to wash somebody's hill away. Also, there've been some things said about, well, it's on the golf course. I hope someone realizes that that's a fairway. People cannot enter onto the golf course there. And, you know, we're, again, another kind of cavalier thing, that, oh, we're just kind of ignoring, you know, people's property rights. In this whole thing, again, what has this done for the City of Burlington? Maybe 10 people will live there. Well, it seems like the other condominiums in town are having a tough time selling. The big argument is that it's on the golf course. So by that same rationale, do we decide we don't have a duplex in the middle of Perkins Park or the middle of Roosevelt? And so there's not one there, so we'll put one there. The question about spot zoning is really quite good. Our entire area, several miles, R1. Spot zoning is the idea, the developer comes in and says, oh, I want to put in a duplex in the middle of these. And so, the city council has then asked to change that little tiny spot. That's part of why there are limits on this, on how small a PUD can be. And Burlington happens to have chosen a very small limit, and this is the smallest that it can be. It's spot zoning. It isn't something that offers what a PUD is supposed to have about recreational things for a group of people and commercial, little businesses and things. That isn't it. It's spot zoning. It's cramming in as much as you can into the land, and it's to our detriment. And I'll finish with a question, too. What happens when it rains and our neighbors have mud in their backyard or in their houses? Who do we come to? Who does the golf club go to? Costs thousands to take care of that. Is the city going to accept that liability? In that same questioning, I asked about, okay, it says in the code that the street has to be accepted. In other words, the street is supposed to have been built and done, and the city can say, yes, the sewers are good, yes, the city's good, we'll accept it, and then they issue building permits. I've asked questions about that, and I've been told, oh, oh, no, we could have, you know, a house built back there or something. You know, where are the rules? Where are the zoning laws? Where are the codes? Are they just waived? And the bottom line is, who's responsible when something goes wrong with this?
Of course, it's Jim Davidson. Everybody knows that. But I have a question for you, though. Now, on the spot zoning, I, I'm still not, I'm still not there with you, but if I could ask you a question, if you could just break it down to two or three, two or three things, what's your main reason, two or three things, of not wanting that? What's your biggest concern?
Um, again, if people have been on the council longer have had to hear my story before, we picked in 1980 to build in Burlington rather than just outside because of the zoning laws. We knew that then an apartment complex wasn't going to go up next door. A rental duplex wasn't going to go up next door. And that's the guarantee that city zoning gives someone. It's not an area that has had this before. It's not a cornfield area that had been underdeveloped. It's, was existing homes that were torn down.
So you're totally against anything being built there, unless...
No, 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 R1. You know, I'm wondering why so many things are being waived? The street's smaller than the street I live on, and yet, when I look at other condominium areas, the streets are wider to allow for more parking and easier getting around. You know, we're already hearing, oh, no, you know, we don't have all the covenants written. Oh, no, the plan's not changed, but just kind of trust us. You have zoning, please stick to it.
So you've been there over 30 years in that neighborhood? I guess, you know, I come back to this where I think, how many more years do you think you'll live there? I mean, don't, do you think your house will be too big for you?
No.
And do you want other options of something smaller to live in?
If I wanted other options, I would be happy to buy an R1 home, not something crammed into that little space with that little green area around it. This will end up with the smallest, probably, amount of yards in maybe three-fourths of the City of Burlington.
And as far as, you know, the rules and as far as what you can build, and I, you know, I'm looking here, too, that Mr. Zager has tried to follow all those rules, and that, you know, maybe, and I've heard other people complain about these PUDs behind Navajo and things, and maybe, I guess I'm wondering, should that have been changed? I mean, if people don't want those and still saying...
Those were cornfields. They weren't established neighborhoods.
Well, I mean, nobody has wanted them behind their house. Anybody that I've talked to that's already living there and one comes into the neighborhood, they don't want it. I mean, if I talk to somebody over on Navajo or anywhere, they don't want those. I mean, they just don't want it because, you know, people over there said, well, I bought this because the church had this field behind me, and I thought it would always have this field behind me, and now I'm going to have, you know, I mean, it's the same kind of thing I'm hearing, and, but when we establish those rules and say we permit that, then how can we then say we don't permit it?
You permitted those because they were in undeveloped areas. They are, have more space. A developer is not just supposed to be allowed to go in and request this and get it done. Now, maybe you feel that Mr. Zager's done the things he's supposed to. We all have questions about the lack of detail. We get conflicting answers when we talk to the city about what's this mean and what's going to happen. It's changed there. We were the third house. I expected change. I expected growth, and building in that area is not a problem. We object to being spot zoned when we will be the only area within several miles that that's allowed.
Thank you, Barb.
The potential for harm because of the environmental things, the congestion, we haven't had anything answered. And so, again, my question, who do we call at 2:00 in the morning when it's raining and mud's running through someone's basement?
Thank you, Barb. I want to correct one thing. The proposal is for four duplexes, not five duplexes, and I want to make sure that that's understood. And that's one of the reasons that I'm looking at it, that it's hard for me to say no, because this development came to us last time, we thought it was too crowded, and he's made the adjustments necessary, and it's hard for me to go against what the zoning board is recommending and the personal property rights, et cetera. Anyway, anybody else in the audience, please? I have to, I jumped ahead of you there just a minute.
Hi, Steve Hawes, 3101 Crystal Drive. Yes, I'm back.
Yes.
I wasn't going to talk tonight, but I've got a, and I know the direction this is going. I know what the council's going to do here. Very unfortunate, but I, I've got a real issue with the difference between the October 17th meeting, both the Planning and Zoning Commission, and the City Council. I'm going to read some comments. I'm not going to put any names with them, but these are public records. One council member questioned if this was the correct development for the area. He stated he would be voting against the ordinance. Another council member, he stated that he was a firm believer in personal property rights but felt there were other options for the property.
And that was me, and I will tell you, that's true.
Okay.
Yeah, that's what I said.
I just want to, people, this thing's gone 180 degrees, and I don't know why. And then we've got new members in the council.
If you want me to, I'll explain why.
Please do, Mr. Ray.
Because the program, the proposal has changed since then to now, to meet the requirements of an R1 density, and that's what's changed my opinion about it. Before, it was not meeting those requirements. That's why I thought there was something better that could be done, and I think this is something better that could be done. So that's why I'm on the other side now.
Okay. Appreciate that response. However, that it went from eight to 10, or from 10 to eight, as far as number condo units, but I still have yet to have an answer after two and a half years. The PUD specifically says the intent of the existing area cannot be violated. This is an R1 area. It is being violated. Can somebody explain to me why the, what is the intent of an R1? It's single-family homes, and it's being violated.
With the same density requirements as an R1. That, to me, is the same thing. Which is what, 9,000 square feet, right? Yeah.
So the intent's whatever you want to make it. So the intent's whatever you want to make it.
No, no, it's 9,000 square feet. It's 9,000 square feet.
The intent of the area, there's only single-family homes out. That's, that's why I really struggle with that. And I respect what you're doing here as a council, but this thing doesn't make any sense to me, the way this thing's been handled from, from day one. It shouldn't have got out of the planning department. It should have been told no upfront. Okay, I'll go on. Another council member felt it was not the right development for the area, and also another member stated, too much development for a small area. And we still have eight condos, one single-family home, one way in, and that's it. There's only one street in there. And I guarantee you, as sure as I'm sitting here, within five years from now, we're going to be looking at the south side of Florence, and somebody's going to want to pile about 20 condos in there. Then what are you going to do? They're going to give them a PUD? I mean, that's the issue. There, there's no vision on this thing. So. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Haas. Anyone else wishing to speak? Seeing none. Remember, this is the second reading of three required. Counsel, do you have any comments additionally?
Um, I have a couple of questions, and Steve's here. Can I ask you some questions? You know, a lot has been brought up, you know, in the past two years about water runoff. And, and I know there's no insurance truly that you can give an individual of either to the south or, or to the west, or, excuse me, north or to west, about water runoff going into their yards. But what are you doing to make, you know, the runoff less going to that?
I really love that question because one of the things that you do when you hire an engineering firm is you actually grade the property to let the water run a certain direction, so.
And where would that water run to?
It'll run to the retention area that you're looking at. It'll be slowed down initially, but all the water will be directed. The difference between a single house being built like on Florence Avenue is that they didn't have to have any water plan. So wherever the water went, it went. The beauty of this PUD is unrequited to have a plan that will direct that water, and they'll have to grade the entire lot, which is very expensive to maintain that, that drainage plan. But the guarantees that people are looking for is, is the ability of an engineer to make that kind of decision. And that's what I've got to rely on, is that these people are professional people, and they know what they're doing. So I'm very comfortable that's not going to happen. In addition, you know, the, the idea of good development is that I am concerned about my neighbors out there. We've been around this town for a long time, and I don't want to flood anybody's yard for personal reasons, not for development reasons. So I'm very comfortable that, you know, that the engineers who are doing the work on this thing can guarantee the fact that there's not going to be water running adversely to other properties. If in the event, now, I know you guys have been asked that question over and over again, what happens if this happens? What happens if that happens? If in the event that something would occur, then, I've been around here long enough that I'm not going to let something affect the neighbors out there or the golf course, either one. I mean, this is not the first time I've done something, and I've never had anything done that anybody came back and said it was done poorly without planning. So I can assure you that with the engineering support on this thing, that this thing will be done properly. Any other questions?
That was my main one.
Thank you. Counsel, any other comments?
I guess the comment I made, and Steve, you know, wrote some quote, or read some quotes, and, and mine was the first one where it said, I didn't feel it was the right fit for the area. And, you know, every time that this came up, this is two and a half years now, that in the works by Mr. Zager in this property, you know, it's, and I've been out there numerous times, you know, and, and the spring, summer, and fall, and even winter, and walked it, and I've been in people's backyards and, and looked at it, and, you know, my main concerns were water runoff, and there's no guarantees, you know, of, of where that water's going to go. Two years ago, when we had eight inches of rain one night, you know, my house is the highest on the block. Well, I had four inches of water in my basement. There's no guarantees on that. So there's just certain guarantees that we don't have in life, and, but then Steve's done everything that we've asked him to do with the, the square footage, the 9,000 square feet within the densities. So, you know, it's this one where he's done everything that the city's asked him to do, and at this point, unless something dramatically changes, I'm going to, will he ask for it?
Anything else, Counsel? Ready to vote then, please? Kathleen?
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye.
Reed?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Second reading has passed. There'll be one more reading in two weeks. Thank you, everybody, for your comments. Moving on to our next item, I have a resolution.
Thank you. Appreciate it. I have a resolution approving the final plat of first edition to South Ridge subdivision.
We have a motion and a second for approving the final plat of the first edition of South Ridge subdivision. Eric, do you have comments on this, or Dan, you want to make yours?
No, we had a few issues that needed resolve. They were resolved, and Eric, is there anything else to add? Go ahead.
This is, it is just clarification. It's a 17-lot subdivision on South 14th Street across from Blackhawk Middle School. It is owned R2, single-family, non-traditional, which allows single-family duplex, sort of is the traditional zoning, but does again allow a single-family duplex. They're planning on putting duplexes toward the back and single-family towards the front, and it does meet all our requirements for a subdivision.
And it does meet the requirements of how many units are going to be duplexes and how many are going to be single-family based on that?
Yep. They're going to have eight single-family flats and nine duplex flats.
Anyone from the audience wishing to speak on this issue? Seeing none. Counsel, do you have any comments or questions from Eric or Dan?
I have none.
I have none.
No?
No.
Don't either. I just want to, except to say thank you to Mr. Peck for all his patience and hard work concerning this. Okay. Kathleen?
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye.
Reed?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Thank you. The motion's carried. Next, we have another resolution.
We have a resolution adopting a plan to allocate hotel-motel tax revenues.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Dan, what do we have to say about this item?
Not a whole lot. This is what we talked about at the work session and the allocations that council wished and the changes that were made.
In a nutshell, it revolves around the first $600,000 in revenue for hotel-motel taxes divided equally with the Convention Visitors Bureau and the city. After that, it goes 65, the city 35% to the Convention Visitors Bureau, which is the change in the, in the formula. Is anyone wishing to speak to this item? Seeing none. Counsel, do we have questions or comments?
The only one that in, I asked earlier was on the special projects, which is $108,000, that includes in the future property tax relief.
Property tax relief, according to the information that Stephanie has given us.
Okay. Because I, I just think that's key, that we're applying this to property tax relief to all the individuals in Burlington, so.
Yeah, I agree.
You could always grow that relief fund is always another plus, too.
I agree. Anything else, Counsel?
I have nothing.
Ready to vote then? Okay, Kathleen?
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye.
Reed?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
One more resolution on our regular agenda.
Okay, we have a resolution authorizing the mayor to sign a contract agreement authorizing the demolition of city-owned buildings at 1106 Washington Street.
More popularly known as the Old Dresser Rand.
Yes.
Art is formerly known as Prince.
Yes, we, the bids were let. Basically, we had one legitimate bid to do it. You've all seen that, what the bid was, absolutely zero dollars to the city. Also, a contract, our city attorney has brought forth a contract. You see a draft there. I don't see a whole lot of major changes to that. The next step would be after you approve the resolution, changes still can be made in this contract. That's not a, an absolute.
Okay.
And we'll bring that in front of the developer and make sure everything's good to go and get him on his way.
All right. And if there are problems down the road, then we don't have to sign, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Anyone from the audience wishing to comment on this item?
Don Harder, 1018 Canterbury. I'm not really wanting to speak to this item directly, but I really think it's the city's responsibility and should be to try to see as much of these properties that are put back into usable uses as can be. I, I was down in Florida early this year, and I noticed that the city council in Fort Myers and also the school district was conducting an auction on properties that they no longer were using. Now, some of the properties, they had paid large sums of money for at one time when they were thinking about building schools, et cetera, et cetera, and for some reason, those plans had changed, and they no longer felt that they had a use for those properties. In some cases, they were actually giving the properties away with the understanding that the future owner would have to put up some kind of a bond to ensure that they were going to do something with the properties. Now, I'm not saying that this building or this location is, would be feasible for something like that. I've been in the building. It seems like it's a structurally sound building, but it's an old building. But if we do this in the future, I would like to really encourage you to look at some possible way that you could, even, and I'm talking about mainly with the residential properties that I've been affected with, that you've done this with. It would be well if you could try to find someone who would be interested in these properties, even if it was very small in regard to the monetary amount that they paid, because the amount I'm sure that you're going to have to okay for demolition is, is, it's almost nothing, but at the same time, it is something because they're getting all the goodies of tearing the building down.
Right.
So if you could somehow look at these and see, you know, guys, we have some property here, we're not using it, maybe someone could come up with a use for it if we didn't scare them to death with the idea that they were going to have to pay a big sum of money for it. But at the same time, to guarantee you or protect you, I think you should require some kind of a surty bond or some kind of a bond in which they would be required for a certain period of timeframe. Now, again, something like that, it'd have to be a longer timeframe than you do on some of your residentials. But something that would require that individual, that if they didn't actually carry through with it, they would give up this bond, which, again, the city could use towards the demolition of the property. Maybe you pursued this already with this property. But if you haven't, I think it's really something to be looked at for all the properties we have that are neglected, and there are a lot around town that are neglected. Instead of just tearing them down, looking at, at something that may be feasible, even to the point of giving it away as long as you have some guarantees. But I, I didn't mean to address this one because I haven't been privy to a lot of your discussion in regard to how you handle this.
And it's an excellent point, Don, and I agree, and that's one of the concerns I have with giving properties away, because there's no guarantee that somebody will actually do something with it, like, for instance, the Apollo Building is an example, but.
Or Daisy Anne's building.
Or Daisy Anne's building, or this particular building, I think we've tried to go.
It's been marketed prior to the flood, had some very good bites on it, I guess, and after the flood, when it, obviously, everything was pretty much ruined, the electric and everything. The cost to renovate it was just astronomical.
You could always probably build new on that site, and you can't really have it the whole thing.
And I, and I'd like to say, I wholeheartedly agree with what you say.
Me, too.
But, you know, I've toured that building, and, and I've renovated buildings, and the damage that that flooded, I mean, I look at that mud all through there and the electrical and everything, I mean, just to bring it back to probably where it was before that damage would probably be hundreds of thousands of dollars. And, and, you know, I, I know people think of me as a preservationist, too, and, you know, to save those buildings, but I can't, I can't see use for those buildings. And it's sad. I mean, I hate to see them go. I love, I love the way, the way those buildings look, but, but, boy, there's vandalism in there, there's kids in there, and writing on the wall, and, you know, it's just, it's just an accident, something waiting to happen, and, and it's just going to get worse, you know, every time it rains, or every, all the cold weather, I mean, it's just going to go downhill because there, it's to the point now, I don't see how we can save those buildings, but I agree with what you're saying.
I do, too. I think the concept makes sense, and we should keep that in mind, you know, with future deals.
John Mercer, and John, I thought was a great employee for the city. Many years ago, this has probably been 20 years ago, when he worked with the inspection department, had a program that he helped establish on these older dilapidated residential properties, houses. And what he would do in those cases would be to go out and look at the house, some, in many cases, they were for all practical purposes, ready to be torn down. He would then contact local people that did these kind of things, myself included, and say, you know, it's going to cost us $5,000 to tear down this building or this property and make it a green space. He said, would you be willing to renovate that house and put it back into a habitable situation for that $5,000 at the end of the project? In other words, if you would take the property, and when you finished it, and our inspectors went through and inspected it and so on, we would then grant you that demolition money as part of your incentive for doing it. I thought it was a great program. I think he had some homes that, for all practical purposes, probably should have been bare ground.
I wonder what happened to them.
Yeah, we need to revisit that for sure.
I, I try to, again, John's passed away now, but, but John had a great idea, I thought, with that, with the inspection department. I mentioned it to several people, but, but it's, it's kind of a no-brainer, really. If you're going to spend $5,000 to tear a house down.
Well, onto that $5,000, and you're sent to do it at the end.
Yeah, but you didn't get the money until the end. The end project had to be done and approved and inspected before that money could be transferred. And it was, it wasn't a huge amount. I mean, a couple of times, I got $5,000 for a property, but if it was the difference between the house being torn down and having a green lot or having a nice residential property for someone to live in, it, it sometimes tipped the scales to the positive. So it might be something you might want to consider. Larger buildings like that, it's going to take a different framework, but.
You know, I've driven by that, and we went through that Dresser, Old Dresser Rand building last week during our work session, and, you know, Becky alluded to it, to just the vandalism alone that, in the sort of, the destruction of what's going on inside of it, you know, where there were some areas that were nice, there were the office buildings, and, you know, over just weeks or months of what individuals unfortunately have done to that building, you know, that's a potential additive there. And so, at, at some point in time, you have to make that decision. Do you rehab it?
Yeah.
Or do you tear it down? And it's been sitting there, and we've tried to, you know, sell it, and we've marketed, and it's, unfortunately, it's got to the point that just by getting rid of that building is also going to make that area a little nicer and cleaner and everything else.
Another building that will probably have to be considered in the near future. Mr. Davidson mentioned one, the old Apollo Building. You don't own that, but it just makes me sad every time I go by and seeing that splintered old building.
Well, the thing is, there's supposedly these YouTube videos that are running out on, on the internet of kids breaking into the Apollo Building, and, you know, and that's sad, you know?
Yes, it is.
And it's, you know, I, to me, is find something better to do with your time than destroy buildings.
Another building right down the street from the one that you're talking about is the old Borax Building, but it's, it's built like a Ford. I've been in it several times, and it's built like a Ford. It's really a shame that we couldn't find some uses for that, but unfortunately, it's going that same direction, unfortunately.
But, you know, you get owners who let that happen.
Yes, they do.
It's not the city that lets it happen.
No, I'm not blaming you for this.
It's an owner. Yeah, and it's, you know.
Ultimately, unfortunately, sometimes it comes back on your shoulders, but that's not your fault.
Because they walk away, and they just leave, and, and we have to take it over.
But I'm dealing more, I'm talking more in regard, because I know there's a lot of homes around Burlington that have had fire damage several years.
I see, we're not in real estate business, so we don't want to be.
No, I understand.
Well, thank you, Don. Some good ideas, some good thoughts. Anyone else wishing to speak during this resolution? Hearing none. Counsel, any final comments?
No.
Okay, we have a motion to approve demolition. We have a second. Kathleen?
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye.
Reed?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Thank you, council. Now's the time, we have set aside for comments from the audience for anything that we've not already discussed previously.
Eric Princheria, nine oh seven High Street. I just wanted to visit with the council, before the meeting today, I pulled up on the city website the priorities and goals for the city council that were written last year, and it was my impression that, that that was an annual event that took place, I believe, in March, and I was wondering.
Which is not, it's an every other year.
Every two years. We did it, we did it two years in a row to get some of the new council members, which was myself, because there was an overlap, so that's why we didn't do it, we went back to back years.
Okay, very good. And I, the reason that I wanted to bring it up is it's twenty-five percent through the new year already, we're one-fourth of the way through. And so, you know, I guess I just wanted to emphasize to the council that there's a lot of items on there that really do need some, some attention, and I guess I was kind of hoping for some type of, what I would like to encourage the council to do is to adopt specific goals as opposed to general priorities as it's currently listed in there. And I was operating kind of under the assumption that you'd be going through that process sometime soon.
But what we decided to do two years ago, Eric, was, we used to do this right after new council members were seated, and we thought that was unfair to them because they wouldn't have a background, so we went to the off-year. So in March or February, depending on what, of 2013, will be the time we'll do it, and then when we have our city manager on board, too, that will certainly help us in that process.
Okay, very good, well, thank you very much.
Yeah, you're welcome, Eric. Anyone else from the audience?
Just one thing, I would like to encourage the council to consider, and I, when I was out of town, I read in the paper that you were considering, but I hadn't heard any final offer or decision on it, of having your work sessions televised. I think it would be really beneficial to the citizens of Burlington. I know I mentioned, just looking through here on the first sentence, it says, "All matters listed under item one consent agenda have been discussed." Well, I'm sure you did that in your work sessions. I know a lot of the comments that I've heard made in regard to items you've passed tonight, you know, saying that we've talked about that or this has been done, I think those discussions are really important for the citizens of Burlington to be privy to, so I would like to hear what your, and you don't have to do it tonight, but in the future, I'd like to hear what your plans are in regard to possibly considering having your work sessions open, or not open, but televised, which I think would really help the citizens of Burlington see where you're coming from on making some of the decisions that you make, okay?
Thank you, Don, we have talked about this issue.
Stan got to it, Stan got to you.
I'm moving back in Florida. I have a question then on that, so is there a way through MediaCom to find out, you know, like they do the Nelson Radiant, other shows, through MediaCom to find out how many people are watching, you know, just a regular meetings?
I wouldn't think so, but.
I don't think so, I don't.
I'm just throwing that out.
Okay, any other audience members?
Satellites, you can find out.
Stan?
Stan Stratt, twenty oh nine Shamack Drive, I'm glad Don came back in Florida, you've got good points there. It wouldn't matter if there's only five more people, the thing is, it's there for the people that are interested. That's what it's all about, you guys transparency, see who's making what decisions, what your input is, what your feelings are. Naturally, you can look around here, there aren't many people here, a lot of people can't come. You're televised, if they can't watch it now, you're taped later, they can observe that at that time.
Okay.
Got another question for you. Your hydroelectric plant that was put up the work session, where would that be built?
Locking down eighteen.
And then my next question, what would Burlington have to do with that?
The way that works, any municipality along the Mississippi, or actually anywhere, can actually bid on those rights. The county could have, Oakville could have, any town could have bid on that, they chose not to. I mean, it's a lot of money, it's a lot of time that goes into that. Kind of back up, originally, there was a firm out of Ohio that bought up the rights to everything on the Mississippi, government decided if they weren't gonna do anything with them, they had three years in order to act on those leases, they chose not to because they couldn't obviously act on all of them, that's what opened them up to the general public. Cities have a municipal preference, which means they can bid on it, and that'll go to the head of the class, eliminating these outside firms that are trying to be part or trying to buy that up. City of Burlington decided there's an opportunity there, that's why we jumped on it. Anybody else could have, too, Davenport could have, any other town could have bid on that and set their application in. We were the only ones at the time that did, that's why we ended up with it.
Well, I guess my question is, when they gave you that presentation, I was understanding that Burlington didn't have put up any money, so that must not be true. We're gonna have something invested in that.
Initially, we did, the initial permitting and feasibility study we have already done, that's already done. Going forward.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Going forward, the price tag for the whole project, no, the city will not be putting up money for that project.
As you said.
But we will have legal fees involved in, whatever those might be.
How's this, other than people getting jobs, bringing money in this way, I can understand that, is my electric rate's gonna go down?
Well, that's a good question, Stan.
Does a lion have to purchase all this power that we generate?
That's another good question.
That's, there's a, yeah, there's a formula out there that they have to purchase so much, it's at a certain price. The company that wants to do this is gonna have to take all that into account, because obviously, if the city doesn't put it up, they're gonna have to put it up, and then whatever that deal is that they come to with the city. Our equity in this is they need a city in order to be, to do it, unless we let that lease lapse, then it's gonna be open forum for anybody, so if they wanna be the one to do the project, then they have to come to us, they have to come through us, since we have the lease at this particular time.
But still, it's not all roses for us, if a lion says, we're not gonna buy this, we're up there generating all that power and it's gonna back down.
No, that's, that's not our problem, that's not our problem.
It's like the ethanol plant right out there in Middletown, I guess, isn't it, cheaper?
Let's see, that's not, that's not Burlington's problem, that's the company's building's problem.
Well, just what happened with these plants like that's why.
No, what I mean is, Stan, if the project doesn't make money, that's not on our back.
That's the investors' problem.
That's the investors' problem. So you can see, there's a lot of unanswered questions, I mean, we're just in the beginning process.
That's another question I got, why at a work session can everybody for it, voice all their opinions, and anybody opposes it or has a question has to wait a week?
Generally, if the council has questions of somebody, they will ask, so obviously, they're not gonna ask an opposing view question at a work session.
Wouldn't that be the time to address it, before you kind of make up your mind? A lot of times, when they present this stuff, you guys are kind of figuring out what you want to do, how things are gonna go, and then you come up here and tell us what you've decided, a's and nays, and you know.
Not always, Stan, it doesn't always work, though.
Ninety percent?
Well, you know, you know, you ought to have some faith in what we're doing, what we're supposed to do.
I do have faith, that's why I want you on television, and I want to be able to ask questions.
Councilman, McCambe, did you have a question or a comment you wanted to make?
Uh, no, I was just glad to see you, Stan, just glad to see you.
Appreciate it.
Okay.
I appreciate you coming down.
Another concern, the other day, when you so graciously let me go through the Dresser Rand down there with you, which I truly appreciate, because I've never been in there before, walking up the sidewalk there, I noticed on our new bridge, which was built, I went out to the White House today, and I think was two oh one, there's a retaining wall crack, it's got an inch crack, there's a number of blocks cracked all the way through the wall, bulging out. Man, that can't be good, we're worried about Cascade Bridge, hell, we better be worried about the one we're driving on now. Is anybody looking at that?
I, don't quote me on this, but I think it's been addressed, I think they're aware of that, and that was part of the problem with the spans.
Yeah, it looks like it's approached before the bridge.
Right, right.
But there's got, they told you, there's a heck of a lot of pressure there that shouldn't be.
I'll make a note, we'll let Public Works know, I think it's something they already addressed, but we'll make sure.
Yeah, I'd like to hear the results, if possible.
Okay, thank you.
One other thing, don't run away, you guys got a couple minutes yet. Up there in Horse Street, you guys got them bags over the lights that look like birdcages.
I'm sorry, what, what street?
Horse.
Of course.
Horse and Osborne.
Horse and Osborne.
What does it take to get rid of them, you gotta be kidding me.
No.
The last council said, or the other council, a couple of members said, we was waiting to see if the traffic increased and we needed the lights.
That's, that's correct.
I don't see no counters up there, I see how much traffic's going through, how you deciding that? Go by at midnight?
No, they're slated to come down.
Yeah, they should, they just look better.
Yeah.
If we don't need the lights, take them down, but at least take the bags off them for crying out loud.
Well, we can't do that, because what happens is, the sun shines on those lights and you get a glare on there, and it looks like a red light or a green light, and you can't do that, you gotta bag them, safety issue.
Well, think all the money we can get, we take them lights down, scrap them, steel's up. One more thing I like to add, that's why we're talking about steel.
Stan, every time.
They let me talk anytime, except tonight, I gotta wait and think about all these questions.
We can email, call me.
If, by chance, you know I'm against Cascade Bridge, definitely, if that has to be disposed of and tore down for a new bridge, what kind of monies are we getting for all that scrap iron?
Well, that's another good.
That's a good question.
We're paying them to tear it down and they're making thousands, thousands of dollars, I'd probably say half a million dollars, just with steel is, on top of what they're charging.
That's all part of the process. That's all part of the project, it all has to be considered.
Huh?
That's our steel.
Yeah, that's why I say, we should get the monies out of that.
Most likely that'd be true, Stan, yeah.
Yeah, I'll let you guys go.
Oh, come on, one more.
Thank you. I gotta have some for next time.
Hey, you gotta make ten, by the way, Stan.
All right, we have one more.
I just have one quick introduction, basically, Mark Gillette.
I need a name.
Oh, I'm sorry, my name's Ron Prozine, and I'm a property manager, property owner, I have a handful of rental properties, and Mark Gillette has, is trying to organize an association, basically, of rental property owners, and that's what we're gonna do. Our goal is to work with the city to improve the rental properties we have, we have a few people that don't want to keep their places up, the majority of us want to do a good job, I've talked to you about some of the ones, you came and looked at one of ours, I always tell people my best reference is the city housing inspector, I don't know if anybody's ever called them, but we have a good relationship, and I just, by way of introduction, I've been asked to be the liaison between the city council and the association, it's called Southeast Iowa Property Owners, so hopefully you'll see me here most of the time, and again, we're here to work with the city, you can talk to any of the inspectors about how I maintain mine, and most of the people in the association have the same idea to kind of try to eliminate problems and work with the city.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan.
I just like to personally say, I do know how you handle your properties and you take good care of them, I think it's a great deal.
Thank you.
And so, Eric, you're promoting with this, yeah, okay. All right, good. Anyone else? Very good, okay. Comments from council?
Um, I have a little comment, it's getting nice out, and I just urge everybody to be aware on who is on the roads, motorcyclists, bicyclists, runners, we live in a community that there's a lot of people on the roads via either bicycles, bicyclists, motorcycles, or even runners. Little personal story, the other day, myself, running down Sunnyside, going towards traffic the way you're supposed to if you're running on a street, there was an individual that wanted to try to run me off the road.
He didn't vote for you.
Yeah, I knew it would.
That was mean.
But the thing is, what I'm saying is, actually, this happens a lot in Burlington and Southeast Iowa. Runners, walkers, bicyclists have the same rights to the roads as vehicles, we have to abide by the same laws. I just ask that you slow down, we have Team B stats out there, which is Burlington Endurance Sports Club, and also Bike Burlington, there's, so there's a lot of riders out there, just slow down, you know, are you in that much of a hurry to endanger somebody? No, so, especially with a lot of motorcyclists out there, too, so, just be safe, that's all I have.
And that makes me want to say something, you know, Burlington right now is probably as beautiful as it can be, I mean, everything's blooming, and I just want to ask citizens to help keep it beautiful, I mean, I go out and I pick up trash, if there's trash out there, don't walk by it, pick it up, and, you know, and just encourage people to, to keep things clean, because it really says something to people when they come to our community, if there's trash along the streets or something, and, and if it takes a little time, I think once you start cleaning it up, other people start keeping it clean, so I just hope as a community, we can start doing that, keeping our community clean.
Indeed, we are a beautiful town right now, beautiful, and speaking of cleanup.
Speaking of cleanup, leaf collection will go on for the next two weeks, the set-out day is after your garbage, trash pickup day, and you can use the store-bought paper containers or you can use your own garbage cans.
And the paper bean one doesn't count?
No, no, your normal garbage cans that you have, you can fill those and put them out. Also, citywide cleanup starts with Monday's route on April sixteenth and continues for the five, six weeks, till you get all the.
Five weeks it would be.
Five weeks.